Planning Board meeting, did anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as whether accept or not?
I'll make a motion to accept them as written.
Do you have a motion by Mr. Repucci to accept as written? Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Robbins, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Any abstentions on that one? None? Okay. Alright, so that motion passes. Communications, Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. You have one communication that's in your packet before you tonight. It's a communication from the Chair. He made an attempt to craft some wording on an affidavit or stipulation for the, for your review, and you may want to speak to that either now or later, but that's all I have in communication.
Okay, yeah, I'll speak to it. So at this point, just take a look at that, that's made for you to review. We don't have any feedback from planning or anything yet, so, you know, take a look at it, get your thoughts together. It'll come up at another meeting, once we've had some input from, from planning on their thoughts, so. That's, that's all I have for that. Report of committee and liaison, anything?
Yes, the HDC did have a meeting. One applicant from One Lock Street for a sign approval, which was approved.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. So I'll go ahead now and gonna read the procedure of the meeting and hearings for everyone in the audience. So after each legal notice of each conditional special use permit or site plan or subdivision is read by myself, the Board will first determine if the application is complete and ready to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview or description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the Board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. First, I'm gonna ask for anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan to come forward and speak. If you do decide to come forward, please state your name and address for the record at the microphone. This is the time for you to express any concerns or ask any questions that you might have with the plan. Next, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The Board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. Then the applicant will be given, or rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any of the questions or concern raised by the public testimony. If so needed, I'll allow one member of the public to come together to represent sort of any group that still has any questions or concerns, and respond to those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will resume a public meeting, at which time will deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria we have established in our national revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. Thank you, everybody, for your interest and courteous attention. If you do have a cellphone, I'd ask at this time that you put it on vibrate or turn it off. Thanks. So old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plan, case number one, that case is tabled to a date uncertain, and we will notify others. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans, case number two, Brian S. and Melissa J. Zagarides owners. This is an application and acceptance of proposed two-lot subdivision for a property located at 39 New Dunstable Road. And I'd ask at this time if anyone on the Board had a chance to review this package and like to make a motion regarding whether we should take jurisdiction, that's ready for it.
So moved.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Robbins to take jurisdiction? Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay. Do we have someone from the applicant here that wants to speak on that?
This is number two?
Number two.
Yeah.
Number one. This is number eight.
It's on, yeah, you're fine.
It's fine, you can use it.
Yeah.
You turned it off, you have to slide it back.
Are we good now? Nathan Chamberlain, professional engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. It's a pretty straightforward application, it's a two-lot subdivision. This subdivision was actually approved in 2015, and the approval lapsed, so we're back here to have it re-approved. It's a single-family lot right now, and we're proposing two lots, dividing that one lot into two. The existing structure would be raised, and two new buildings would be constructed on each of the lots. So the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet, and that's approximately what the proposed lots are. We did do a Stonewater management report, submitted that to the city for review. There's a couple of leaching basins on each lot to mitigate any increase in runoff, peak rate of runoff, as well as the volume. There are a couple waivers we're requesting. One is for a waiver to the requirement for underground utilities. It's overhead utilities on both streets, and we just asked that we'd be able to, and the existing houses' overhead utilities, just connect with overhead utilities through each of the proposed houses. And then, the second waiver is for surveying features within 1,000 feet of the subdivision. We've located all the utilities and all the features adjacent to the property, and so we'd just like relief from that requirement as well. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
You've had a chance to review the engineering review letter.
Yes, he came back, we, he had one letter, and we addressed the comments, and he came back with a couple other minor comments. We have no issue addressing those in the final plan.
Alright. Other questions of the applicant by the Board?
Mr. Ducre? Same kind of question about engineering comments. The May 2015 approval had a condition that comments from Gene Walker be addressed prior to recording the plan.
Okay.
Are those similar to the comments made by Mr. Kohalmi? Because I haven't reviewed those.
I, I'm not aware of the 2015 comments, I just, I'm aware of the current ones, so I'd have to research that and see what they were and if they had been addressed.
I don't know if staff has to...
We would have the, I do have the letter, I have the folder from the approval in 2015. However, since the plan was never recorded and moved forward, I probably, I would say that those conditions haven't been met. But I do have the folder, and I can give it to the applicant.
Okay, I'm just thinking there might be comments that are put in, but not caught by the current reviewer.
I mean, as far as the lot design, the proposed buildings and grading and driveways and stuff like that, there is slight changes here on this one, and I know, I think on the 2015 plan, they had like a, like basically a septic system for the, for the drainage, and we have leaching catch basins, so. But we can certainly take a look at what Gene had back then, and if it is applicable, we can certainly address it.
One more question, I don't know if this is talked about last time. You have gas service to the property that's closer to, or closest to New Dunstable Road. Would you have gas for the other property? Natural gas, that is.
Natural gas. Again, we'd have to, I'd have to take a look at that, if it's available in Liberty Street or not.
Doesn't look that way.
There's no gas in Liberty?
I don't see it on your plan. Right.
So if there's no natural gas, we'd have to make other accommodations.
Okay.
Okay, other questions from the Board? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'll take anybody from the audience wishing to speak in opposition or have any concerns with the plan presented. Seeing none? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Alright, seeing none. Any other questions for the applicant from the Board or staff during the hearing? Alright, Mr. Repucci?
Yep. So there are requirements that were laid out, that Mr. DeCray pointed out in 2015. Are we just going to, is our intention just to approve this, still requiring whatever those conditions were to be approved? Since we don't have them right in front of us, I think we should know what those restrictions were, if we're not going to do that.
Yeah, we can, we can ask staff for more clarification, that might be a, that might be a meeting, or a hearing thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, basically, we...
Yeah.
All we're doing is continuing this, right? We're not approving it.
This would be for approval or disapproval at this point.
Right.
Yeah, it never was recorded before, so.
Right, this, yeah, so this, this was not...
This is essentially a new application.
Yeah, it's a new application, a new engineering review, new comments.
Yeah. Steve, your concern was there might have been questions from Gene's review earlier that he didn't notice, but theoretically, he started from page one, went forward, but, you know, but I don't know that that's the case.
Unless he went back and reviewed the 2015 comments.
Right.
I do not know.
Yeah, we don't know that. But we can talk about that in the meeting too, I think. Anybody have anything else for the hearing? Okay, at this time, I'll, I'll close the hearing, move into the public meeting, so we basically have the two-lot subdivision. Like I said, I think my understanding of this is, you know, this is new application, so we probably judge it on what's in front of us. I'm not sure if we can, you don't have the earlier ones right in front of you, do you?
I do.
Yeah, we can, we have them right here, then.
Actually, why don't you let Steve have it?
Yeah, Steve, why don't you take a quick look at it?
Thank you, Linda.
See if there's anything in there that you think, or we could add additional stipulations if we want to.
Engineering review is occurring.
It is, it is likely that Mr. Kohalmi might have reviewed his comments, and they have been, they are reflected in the amended plan, I cannot tell, but I think it'll be safe for us, because I think they're all good comments.
Yeah.
I think it'll be safe for us to add this as a stipulation.
Yeah, to, want to add it to...
That letter?
To the six.
Yes.
We can.
If the applicant want, maybe the applicant wants to take a look at this as well?
Yeah, I mean, if we can give it to him, I, I'll need to open the hearing if we want to get a response, so. Does somebody want to reopen it, just so we can get an actual response from?
So moved.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Robbins to reopen the hearing, to hear from the applicant. Second by Mr. Repucci, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, yeah, so you can, you can go ahead and respond to that if you want to. Take, take the time if you need to look at it.
No, this is, it's, again, it's, they're all very minor, and we can certainly incorporate this into addressing the other comments if they haven't been addressed already.
Okay. Alright, great. So, yeah, we can, well, let's leave it up here, or you, we just...
I will need the date.
I just need the language of the date, here, I'll take it. Okay, any other questions while we're in the hearing? I can close that again. Alright, so I'll go ahead and close the hearing, go back into the meeting, see if we have any other thoughts, does anybody want to make a motion? I guess the thought here would be that we would add that to an existing, is there already an engineering review?
Yes, there is, yeah.
So you could amend it on to six, or you could make it its own stipulation as well. If you're gonna address it, make sure you address the two waivers as well, they, they're pretty typical waivers for this type of plan, as far as I'm concerned. Alright?
If there's no other discussion, I'll...
Okay, Mr. Riley?
I will make a motion to approve new business number two subdivision plan, finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section 190-138G, with a total of 10 stipulations. The first two being wave requests, both reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation three, four, and five is written in a staff report. Stipulation six, to be amended to add the following sentence. In addition, all comments in a letter from Gene Walker regarding a prior iteration of the plan dated May 8, 2015 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department. And then stipulations seven through 10, reading is written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Mr. Riley with the, the 10 stipulations with number six is amended by how he indicated. Do we have a second on that?
One question, date, Gene Walker's date?
Yeah, May 8, 2015.
May...
May 8?
Yeah.
2015.
15, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber, any discussion on this, at this point? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes, thanks. Okay, moving on, new business site plans, case number three, John J. Flatley Company owner, application and acceptance of proposed one-year extension for a site plan amendment to NR 2165. This property is located at 100 through 300 Innovative Way. Is anybody a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready or not to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
We have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Robbins, any second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barley, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes, okay. Do we have somebody here from the applicant that can address that?
Yes, so this is the townhouses that were approved, I guess, last year, and just looking for an extension for that approval. He does, they do plan to construct these, this coming year, or 2019.
Okay.
That's about it.
Questions for the applicant, so essentially looking for a one-year extension at this point? This is the first extension?
Yes.
Okay. And no changes to the plan?
No changes, no.
Other questions? No? Okay, alright. At this point, I'll take, anybody in the audience willing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Please come forward. Seeing none? Anybody wishing to come forward in favor of the plan? Seeing none? Any other questions of the Board for staff or the applicant? Okay. Alright, at this time, I'm gonna close the hearing and move into the meeting, so we just basically have a one-year extension. I think most of us have seen this before. First extension, pretty typical, we do allow a one-year extension. The applicant indicated that they intend to construct in 2019. Any other discussion points or questions?
Just a question.
Mr. Repucci?
On line, did this have ZVA approval also? Or was it, because there's a statement here on line 14, that all ZVA Board of Adjustment Conditions, December 14, 2016, September 13, 2017. I only pointed out, I think their approvals only last for two years, so if it's gonna fall within that window, it's fine, but if it's not, they're gonna have to get that done too, I think.
Correct. Their approval is good for two years, so if they need another extension, well, actually, I think by having, coming to the planning board and getting that approved, that vests them in that project.
Right.
They're vested in it because they've already gone the next step and got plenty more.
I just wanted to point it out, in case it was something that was there, you would, when you fall by the cracks, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. Alright, any other comments or questions? Anybody willing to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Repucci?
I move that we continue this for a year from today.
Okay.
As applied for with no changes.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve with the stipulation that is written by Mr. Repucci. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay, thanks. Okay, new business site plan, case number four, 1987 Tamposi Limited Partnership Owner, the CBTBE Corporation, care of G. Frank T.'s applicant. And this is for a proposed two-story, 28,000-square-foot building, site improvements, property located at 57 Northeastern Boulevard. Is anybody a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion either way as to taking jurisdiction?
So moved.
Alright, so that's to take jurisdiction?
What?
To take jurisdiction?
Yes.
Correct? So we have a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robbins. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion passes. Alright.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, for the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a civil engineer at Hayner Swanson, doing business at Three Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire, and tonight, happy to represent a, a proposed community bank. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about the project, present the facts of the case, answer any questions. I would like to introduce Frank T.'s. Frank is the President and CEO of Mill Yard Bank and Organization. And the site we're talking about is a 2.2-acre site located off of Northeastern Boulevard. I'm sure you most, all of you know, Northeastern Boulevard is a kind of a connector road, really, from exit four to five, on the west side of the Everett Turnpike. It contains a mix of uses, Northeastern Boulevard, commercial properties, industrial properties, institutional properties, residential, retail uses, along with banks, a hotel, and restaurants all have an address along Northeastern Boulevard. And as can be seen on the aerial here, the site we're gonna talk about is a two-acre site right on the frontage of Northeastern Boulevard. The site is immediately abutted to the former Hello Direct Building, I think Harbor Homes has recently purchased that facility here. We have the former Digital Building in the back, budding up against the highway. We have the FAA complex, I'm gonna speak to the south of the site, it's actually southeast. And then across the street, we have a combination of office condominiums. This property is located in the PI Park Industrial Zone. Now, as background, this lot was cut out of the parent's site back in 2002, and in fact, after that subdivision, we immediately came forth with a site plan that was permitted in 2002 for a two-story office building, 28,000 square feet, with parking on both sides. This site is, has the same owner as the larger site in the back. The improvements included with that office facility included parking for 96 spaces, utility connections, stormwater, and sidewalks. In 2003, the site work was constructed, the foundation was built, but the building was never erected on top of the foundation. So if you've been by Northeastern Boulevard, that foundation has been there for about 15 years. Most recently, the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment granted a variance to allow 25% of this 28,000-square-feet building to be used as a bank with a drive-through. So that was done recently for this particular application. Now, even though this site is very visible, there's a few things I'd like to point out to you. Currently, the site shares its access with the main body, and in that main body, you have Best Fitness, you have Boston Billiards, and you have a couple of, of commercial tenants in that building. That's the only access into these two sites. This parking is connected here, and it runs from the back as well to that foundation. The topography of the lot is very, very gentle, really sloping from Northeastern Boulevard towards the back of the site. There was constructed in 2002 a separate and distinct stormwater basin right up here in the north part of the site for this 2-point acre site, and it's been functioning and operating fine since its construction. You may have read in the paper that a group of local businessmen have gotten together in the process of permitting a community bank. After a fairly extensive site search, they have landed here upon this property. And so what we're proposing to do is amend the previously approved site plan to show a drive-through bank within that 28,000-square-foot two-story office. The south part of the site, here, will remain as it's currently configured. Access here, Northeastern Boulevard, paved way, parking space for about 66 cars. But that was never finally finished, the lighting, the landscaping, the parking lot striping, some of the curbing in the sidewalks into the building were never constructed. That will all be built, built out now as they erect, finally erect this building. It is being proposed on the north side of the building, on the first level, to house this proposed bank, and I'd like to talk a little bit about that. What we're proposing to do is introduce a new turnway curb cut off of Northeastern Boulevard. Site distance is very good in that location, there's parking for 24 vehicles. And as you head east in that parking lot, it will then, with proper signage, be able to direct you to the drive-through. Movement here, a one-way movement to both a drive-through lane for a teller, as well as an ATM machine. We will have a bypass lane that will get you back into the main body, the parking, parking lot, if, if you so desire. So we've really tried to create a separate entrance for the bank use, we've tried to create a separate billing entry here for really to act in, in line with the remaining part of the building. And again, the remaining part of the building will be offices, 7,000 here and 14,000 on the second floor. We have 90 parking spaces proposed, 93, I believe, is the, is the requirement, so we're slightly under, but again, having the same ownership with the lot in the back, there's 447 parking spaces back there. Part of the 2002 approval was that these two lots have documents that share access, that share parking, that share stormwater, and those documents, in fact, were perfected in our on-record. I did bring a perspective that the architect sent us, again, two-story building, flat roof, brick and veneer, masonry veneer, exterior fixed glass windows is the, the image. You can also see landscaping on, on the color drawing in the middle, trees along really the parking lot to kind of soften that appearance there, and certainly some trees in, in screenage around the dumpster pad, as well as landscaping plantings along the building itself. around the dumpster pad, as well as landscaping plantings along the building itself. Mr. Chairman, our client, if successful, hopes to begin construction immediately. Obviously, we've got a head start on site work since it was done fifteen years ago. There would need to be, obviously, steel erection and building construction. That's about a six-month process. So I think it's the hope to be in late spring, early summer, if successful here this evening. Our application did include a formal, a formal waiver letter from us. We had asked for three waivers. I'll quickly touch upon those, paraphrasing. The first waiver was for the architectural roof lines. Oddly enough, the land use code requires for non-residential buildings pitched roofs. There are really no pitched roofs in the immediately vicinity of this site, so our architecture would be quite harmonious with the neighborhood. And frankly, pitched roofs aren't really practical for, for a two-story office building such as this. The second waiver we'd like to ask for is, we're actually three spaces under the minimum parking requirement. We're providing ninety spaces, ninety-three are required. And that is really because we, you know, we've, we've cleaned up a lot of the, we've cleaned up, well, actually, let me say, let me strike that, we've actually had to change some of the parking that was previously approved behind the building to make room for the drive-through, so I think six spaces were lost when you compare it to the previous plan. Again, this, this site shares cross-parking arrangements with the, the main body of the parking in the back. And then the third waiver is, much like in two thousand and two, a local surveyor had actually created the subdivision to create this lot. And, and that was at the same time, the two projects were permitted together, the subdivision to create the lot, and then we actually did the site plan here. So we're seeking to use that, that boundary for our particular application here. And so we seek a, seek a waiver of that. In summary, Mr. Chairman, the plan complies with the land use code regulations. The conditions that the staff have outlined in the report are fair and reasonable, are acceptable to our client. And at this time, I'd be glad to answer questions, and I think Frank would too, if there's any banking-related questions you might have about, about this operation.
Okay, thanks. Couple, I had the retaining wall on the sort of top end of the site. What's, how high is that roughly?
It's about three to four feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there, is there any concern or any proposed for, like, a fence or anything on that?
Oh, there's guardrail.
Is guardrail the whole way?
Yes.
Okay, so we got, and then that, the bypass lane around the, the sort of canopy and stuff, that's one directional?
It is.
Okay. And it's, it's striped, I guess, that way, and, and?
Pardon?
They'll be striped with arrows?
Yeah, and signage, you know, it's a, it's a little non-traditional, you know, but you have to get the driver's side on the building side.
Right.
Again, to create, to create this identity for the bank, the curb cut was very important to get that. And there's plenty of turning radius and turning movement to make that happen. We ran an auto turn for the fire department to make sure they could get through the site, and, and they were accepting of the plan we prepared for them, so.
Okay. Mr. Merpucci?
Yeah, I'm, this is just a curiosity. I, the way the parking lot is laid out is fine with me, but I thought that, I thought we had a requirement of, to have a divider after so many spaces, after ten spaces or so.
So?
So I was just wondering if you need a waiver for that or not.
So one ninety, one eighty-four says, if you have an internal parking lot with a string of cars over ten, you need to break it up with landscaping. And, and staff brought that to my attention, and I'm fully prepared to ask for that waiver. I came back to them saying, you know, we're, we're a vested project, essentially. We were approved in two thousand and two. We built out ninety percent of the site improvements. I think, sir, there's, if I'm not mistaken, fifteen spaces in this row. And so, talking over with staff, I think they agreed that, you know, the land use code came into effect in two thousand and seven. This rule came into effect in two thousand and seven. I might be slightly using a loophole here on that, but it's a, it's a waiver that's often asked and received. And I think when you look at the green space and the open space for the overall project, it's set back to Northeastern. It's nice green area here. I think we have ample green area.
Okay.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have an objection if we did include a waiver for that, though?
Yeah.
I don't have an intention of asking you to change it.
I'd be happy to put it on, I'd be happy to put that on the record, no problem.
Okay.
I'd have to make it verbally, and I'm prepared to do so.
All right, in case it becomes an issue. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
I have like three questions regarding the parking. In the top right corner of the drawing, can cars get in and out from that part of the parking lot?
Yes.
So they can enter and exit up in the top right corner, as well as where the bank entrance is?
In the new curb cut, correct.
So for a person to get access to the bank, they'd have to come in, they make a, like a, almost like a reverse direction, hard right turn to get to the teller, is that correct?
Correct.
And is there access, like pedestrian access over to the parking lot where the former deck building is?
Sure.
If there's overflow parking, they could access that and walk back and forth?
Yes, there is, right here.
Okay.
Okay. You know, what's interesting about that back building, it is a very busy site, if you haven't been out there. Best Fitness is a very successful business. At six in the morning, that parking lot is half-full. Boston Billiards is a very successful business, and at late afternoon and evenings, they dominate that parking lot. So our clients were a little bit concerned about that. Of course, we don't have a morning peak, we're not open till eight-thirty, nine in the morning, so there's no interference there. But, of course, my office is right down the street, so I've traveled this road two, three times a day, and there is some spillover right now that exists. And so we're trying to create, you know, synergy between the two sites. We wanna make sure that people can connect to the two sites, but we also like this little island here because it creates a little bit of an invisible line, a little bit of separation that, this is kind of our parking and that's kind of their parking. Now, if they have a peak event at Boston Billiards and wanna park here at night, that easement says they can do that, it's just they would have to, you know, use the pedestrian walkway and walk a little further, so.
Or if your ninety spots get filled up?
Yeah.
People could park in the billiards place and walk over.
Yeah. Well, what's interesting about the ninety spots, I probably should've brought this up, that's, here's our property line. It does not include these other thirty-three spaces right here, which is on our side of that green island, so by default, they almost feel like our spots, so.
See.
They kinda, if we had a very intense office user, which would be great for our client to have, there's ample parking right there as well, in close proximity.
So someone parked in the car wouldn't really know which property it's on, it feels like it's on yours.
Invisible lines, sure.
Okay.
Mr. Weber?
Okay. The, on the top of the roof, the AC units, would they be visible to the parking, I mean, the office park across the way?
You know, I don't know what treatment, and I don't know if, where those will be placed on the roof. I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay. It's just if they are visible, it would be good if they're kind of enclosed, they're not just visible, if they're visible from this parking lot. I don't think they would ever be visible from anybody else, even the public.
Rooftop screening, okay.
Yeah, maybe, just, it depends on, I'm not gonna put it as stipulation or anything.
Okay, I'll bring it.
Just something that you might wanna consider.
Okay.
On the, the drive-throughs, on the exit, is that gonna be a signage exit only?
Yes, there's a lot of signage there, you're not really seeing on the, the church step plan, but, you know, directional signage, stop signage here.
Right, you don't really don't.
Yes, there's do not enter signs as well, so they're not turning into the lanes, correct.
Exactly, that's my concern, only concern. The dumpster access, did you take a look at a dumpster truck that has the forks that it's gonna come in, get the dumpster? Is that a, is that a viable turning? Cause it looks like they're gonna hit that little island there.
Yeah, no, I think the intent was they would use the new curb cut, come in, you know, off hours, they would be able to get a straight shot in, maybe it's?
It just looks, see the island?
With the intent, yeah, I'll double-check it, Ed Schur. The intent is he's able to come in, pick it up, back up, and then head back out this way, so.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, I just saw that and I'm like.
I'll check the nose of that island, sure.
Yeah. On the drainage, is it gonna stay on property, storm drainage, or is it gonna be put back onto?
Yeah. So in two thousand and two, a stormwater cell was built right here, detention basin, and it was built, and it's, it's functioning just fine, and it was built to handle the whole project.
Okay.
And so what we did is we, we checked in the impervious area of this project to the two thousand and two project, and we're actually about six hundred feet less, you know, so.
Yeah.
The engineer in me says, is less is better, and it's working fine, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't see it that.
It does, it does flow off-site, obviously, through the park, yeah.
The traffic report, it's, maybe I'm wrong, but it's stating twenty-five per day? Is that correct? They're only expecting twenty-five trips per day?
No, that is wrong.
Okay, it's just, it's reading right here, proposed development.
Why?
Maybe I'm reading it, I'm probably reading it wrong.
So I did scan the study this morning, and I think page three, weekday total.
Four seventy-two.
Weekday total for the bank is around five hundred trips. So each, you know, through a ten-hour period, each trip, an in, in and out counts as a trip. As you know, with traffic, we look during the peak hours. The morning peak, the bank's generally not open. The afternoon peak, it's adding about sixty trips, thirty in, thirty out, or about one a minute. But it's, yes, more than twenty-five a day.
The reason I brought it up, I had actually visited my bank, which is on Northeastern.
Yeah.
Asked them the question, what's your customer, your average customer?
Sure.
And theirs was a hundred to a hundred and fifty a day.
Sure, yeah. That's a good number.
So.
But what's interesting, banks used to be super, super intense users. You know, a lot of the banks we've done over the years, stacking was a big item, and the nature, and Frank could tell you, the nature of the business has changed so much with taking pictures of your checks for deposit and online banking. Not a lot of people go to the bank anymore. My bank is right down the road on Northeastern Boulevard, and, you know, if you go down there at ten in the morning, there's nobody there.
No.
Yeah.
No, and, and it's just, that's a hundred and fifty, a hundred to a hundred and fifty just for the bank, and then you're gonna have an office space.
Correct.
Now, is that, that's not including, or is that including?
It does not include, no.
Okay, so there's possibility that that could double, but I, I'm, I've seen Northeastern Boulevard, and it's, I don't think that really is a problem, but I just wanted to point that out.
Correct, correct. We compared the bank versus an office in seven thousand square feet, and we found that the bank had slightly more traffic than if that was seven thousand square feet of office. Correct, yeah.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Petropolis, I, some of my questions about traffic have been answered in the flow. I, I know you've spoken to this, but I'm still looking at the, coming in from the southwest entrance in the lower left corner and coming around and taking a right-hand turn, and then banging a U-turn and coming in. It really does seem awkward. It really, and I, I can believe that your, you and your client are constrained by what you got.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking of my bank, where I can sort of do that if I want to, TD Bank down on Daniel Webster, but it's awkward.
Yeah. So, you know, we looked at a bunch of variations on getting through to the drive-through because it's, it's not a standalone bank, it's in line with, with other uses. First and foremost, we thought of using the main entry, but being four hundred feet away did not, you know, that is non-traditional as well, when you have a, your access to your drive-through four hundred feet away from the bank itself. We looked at a curb cut here, located in front of the, in front of the south side of the building. And we were worried about traffic moving in between the entrance in the main body of the parking lot, and then potentially stacking around the corner. So we ended up, again, trying to create bank identity with signage, with the front door, with, with getting a custom for the customers to the site, but we, we felt it best to have our own independent entrance. And yeah, this move, as we just described, I would, I would call it non-traditional. It works, I think with proper signage, it's fine. But as I said a moment ago, drive-throughs, especially for banks, just aren't as intense as they used to be. And it's, it's rare now, I use Santander Bank right down the street, and it's rare now if there's ever one or two cars in that line when I go through that bank, so that's not to say that that wouldn't be the case here. But to answer your question, sir, we, we did look at other options. It's, 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 yes, not traditional, but, but we feel comfortable that it's gonna work?
Is the, well, thank, thank you for that. Is the, the curb, the two lanes are there, and then there's that long barrier right there. Is that a raised barrier all the way along, or is some of it at ground level?
Now, there's curbing here, we have a, we have a stone, I'm sorry, we have a retaining wall here to protect the stormwater area.
I was, I was.
Yes, that's raised, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Mr. Weber?
I have one more question. Jim, I really like the, the greenery on the right-hand side because of the, we like to see more trees over a parking lot. A lot of places do not have that. Is there any chance of adding some more greenery on this left side, up at the top, or even down the strip to just help out keeping that?
Yeah.
Heat conditions that blacktop?
I'll certainly, I'll certainly bring that to, see, the bank will be a tenant in this building, so I'll certainly bring it to the property owner's attention. I will tell you that it's fairly narrow in through here.
Yes, it is.
But I think I agree with you. I mean, there's a nice, there's a couple burning bushes right here around a transformer that we're gonna try to save, but it, I, I think you're right. I think something along that edge, if we could get something in, creates a little bit of definition. I will definitely bring that to the.
Right, and it'll actually keep the pavement from getting hot and really heating up the area.
Correct.
That is new, that's a new, that's a new pavement, isn't it?
Well, our pavement, the binder was in two thousand and two. Now, next door, Southern, I think St. Joe's Hospital here is a tenant in that building, and I can't tell if they paved that recently or not, I don't, I don't recall.
Yeah, I don't wanna, cause it, but if you can get some in there, even if they're just small, or, you know, the rooting doesn't hurt the pavement, but there, there's some separation, but it also cools down.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's it? Yep, Mr. Duker?
Yes, thank you. Jim, you said that you looked at a driveway along the middle, but there would be conflicts with all that traffic in the parking lot. Were there any concerns about putting these two commercial driveways so close each other?
Well, right here and here, I think, Steve, is what you're saying. Couple things. You know, being in that neighborhood, and I think one of the board members made the comment earlier, Northeastern Boulevard is unique, it's a nice collector road, but it doesn't have big peaks, it doesn't have a lot of, a lot of traffic. It moves through the day, there's a lot of gaps, it's flat there, site distance is good. I, I feel, I feel very confident that those two can work together. In fact, I, I measured the distance, they're actually very similar to the recent Domino's curb cuts that are located about a thousand feet away that this board just okayed. I checked that out.
That question came up then.
So I, I, I feel comfortable that, yes, they are close, but there's good, there's good sightlines there. I feel confident that it's a safe intersection. In fact, we're, you know, there's a catch basin, Steve, right there. Peter made the comment, hey, let's cap it and run a new basin over here, so we're not driving over a catch basin every time we enter, and I think that was a, a good idea, so.
So where you have that one-way connecting to the other parcel up there, it's pretty wide, it's like twenty-something feet, I think, is what you have on the plan.
This width is sixteen feet right here.
That's sixteen? Nice, that's more than I could.
Twenty, Steve, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's twenty point.
It is one-way, yes, and it's signed do not enter as well.
Yeah, I noticed that you're making some improvements on the adjacent parcel, is that necessary?
Whereabouts?
To have the curb on the, on the, just not at the property line. I know you're removing pavement and reestablishing, but is it necessary, wouldn't it be better to? it be better to stay within your property?
There was, there's a paved connection here right now, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, you're removing parking.
Yes.
And so you're creating just a driveway.
Correct.
One question is that, is it necessary to have it on the abutment parcel?
You're saying maybe make that narrower, Steve?
Yeah, do you need it to be?
Bring it down.
20 feet wide.
Right here?
Yeah, right at the top of the property line.
Yeah, let me, let me grab my drawing and just measure it for. Okay, so this, this piece right here, where my, my light is, I have it as 20 feet. If we needed to make it 16 feet, just through that throat, I, I can do that, I don't see any reason why you couldn't do that.
Yeah, the other thing I see, if, if it's not striped down, narrow, a leaving vehicle could be approaching, a vehicle coming in the opposite direction.
Okay.
Could be anywhere within that 20 feet.
That's easy, I mean, we've got a pair of do not enter signs right there, facing this way, but if we need to trim that width down, that works, I'm fine with doing that.
Right. Quick question about the detention basin, so that was put in place around 2002.
Yes.
And your statement about it, it's working properly, I guess that means they haven't seen any flooding problems.
Right, so, you know, we do know that two Mother's Day storms of '06 and '07 were the granddaddies of all storms, and of course, there was flooding in the industrial park. But since then, and even, you know, this fall, as we've been designing the project, I've obviously been keeping an eye on it, and there has been no occurrences of any problems with the function of the basin, or, or any of the, the adjoining sites. So, based on just seeing the site all the time, Steve, that's kind of my conclusion.
So it's, it's overgrown now with, with wetland-type materials, in fact, it's delineated as a wetland?
Yes.
Is that an issue with capacity, when it has all this growth in there?
I don't know, do you think it's kind of chewing up some volume, is that what you're thinking?
That's what I'm thinking, because, you know, the city has a lot of detention ponds unattended for many years.
Yeah.
And we know one of our problems with, one of the reasons for, for big drainage problems is the lack of maintenance, and because capacity is taken by growth. Now, this is just like wet vegetation, but eventually it starts in trees growing in there, and these things need to be attended, so I'm just questioning, I mean.
Yeah, it's made itself into a wetland, no doubt, it wasn't a wetland in '02, we had it flagged, it meets the definition of a wetland, there are some cattails in the basin. I, I didn't really think that it would have taken away from any of the, the volume storage that we have, maybe it could, but I'm making that statement just being there and kind of seeing it, that it's functioning properly, it's not really a drainage problem in the area.
Because the runoff from this area, this industrial area, does end up in, nearby brooks, one is hail and hassle, I don't know which is which, but they all converge near the turnpike, and we've been observing a lot of flooding problems associated with these, with these brooks.
Yeah.
So, so we have to question whether these retaining facilities, whether they're still doing the job, or whether they are doing the job as intended so many years ago. It is a requirement by the city, and I think in 2002, that requirement was, was there, that the, the owners do their maintenance and submit those records to the city, so I don't know if this parcel has been done, I don't know if staff knows, I think people are way behind in getting those to the city. But maintenance is, is expected of these facilities, and records submitted to the city, and I think going forward is a requirement of this approval, that that be done.
As is every approval.
Right. A lot of people are following up with, following through those things, I, I don't think that's the case. But I'm just, I mean, you, you're working out here, and you're familiar.
Yeah, I mean, hey, hey, if we were adding impervious, Steve, I would have taken a real great scrutiny, I probably would have rerun all the numbers, you know, here we've got some less pavement, of course, you chipped away at some pavement tonight too, so that'll help the drainage. But we've been watching, especially through this fall, and it seems to be working fine.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
Mr. Weber?
I just have one question, and Steve might be able to attain to this. I, there's a, on the, there's a retaining thing, basin, not on this property that I'm talking about, but the boat ramp, and it's showing that there has to be vegetation inside it, it's showing that it's necessary to have vegetation, so that's what the city's calling out for their retain, area, and I was wondering if you could to, to just a?
Really, for retention pot?
Right. It has to have certain vegetation, and we were talking about getting, are we talking about getting rid of vegetation in this one?
I'm not saying, I'm just saying whether it still has the capacity that it, the way it was designed.
Okay.
You know, what we have seen is cattails, but there could be sediment buildup, what have you, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Just a comment along those lines, but the vegetation may actually extract moisture out of the ground and release it into the air, may actually help the problem rather than contribute to retaining water.
The stormwater and science, the science in stormwater is there's uptake of phosphates too that come off the parking lot from vegetation, that's a very important benefit of having vegetations. I didn't take Steve's comment as being, hey, we don't like the vegetation, get rid of it, I took it as, you know, over time, these stormwater areas need maintenance, they're a dynamic element, it's infrastructure, and they can fill and, and get stuff in them, and debris, and everything else, and so I think he's talking about proper maintenance of that element, rather than the vegetation itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant from the board?
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Seeing none, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan? None? Okay. Any other questions, the applicant or staff during the hearing from the board? None? Okay, at this time, we'll enter the public meeting. So, all right, so we've got a few things that we've talked about, returning ideas, Steve did talk about potentially skinning up the connector between the sort of east and west side of the lot there, and pulling it down from the north end, I guess it would be. Other than that, I don't think we have a lot more things that, I'm not sure, Steve, do you feel like that should be a stipulation, or if that's, I mean, that's just something that they should take a look at? Any other thoughts, comments, questions?
There was only my, my question about the way the parking lot is laid out.
Yeah.
If, if I'm fine with it, in fact, I don't like the dividers personally, I think they might get hotter to plow, but if they don't, if they need that, we should just include the waivers so that they don't run into a problem. If they, if the planning department says they don't need a waiver, I'm, I'm fine with that, I just didn't want to miss anything, that's all.
I think, cause it's an amendment, is that the reason we're just, that's not a change from the original?
It's not a change from the original, but the way it's written is median or island required, parking aisles should not contain more than 10 spaces in a row unless a planted median and or island is provided, the planning board may approve an alternative landscaping plan provided equivalent landscaping is provided.
So we can approve it without a waiver.
Okay.
Good.
Any other discussion points?
Some of the staff. I don't know if it's a standard condition to have, to require a pre-construction meeting.
It's on the plan.
It's on the plan, okay.
On the plan itself, pre-construction meeting, the stormwater report, and the need for an electronic copy, providing to the assessing department.
The prior item is called out as a condition.
Right, sometimes they'll.
Some people leave them off the plans, but in this case, they put them on the plan, so the plan and your approval usually dictates what is required.
Okay, got it.
All right. Anybody willing to make a motion? I remind whoever's making one, there are the three waivers to address, of which are...
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Weber?
New business number four site plan, owners 1987 Temposi Limited Partners at 57 Northeast Boulevard. That the plan meets NRO 190-146D with three waivers. The first, NRO 190-172C, which requires varied roof lines, is granted, will not be contrary in spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, request for waiver, NRO 190-198, which establishes minimum parking standard for the site, is granted, and finding the waiver will not be contrary to and spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three, the waiver for NRO 190-279B and E, which requires applicant to show bearing and distance property lines, permanent monuments, existing easement, is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary in spirit of the intent of the regulation, four through seven as written.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the plan with the seven stipulations and three waivers as indicated by Mr. Weber, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes, thanks.
Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, just continuing.
Welcome to join us.
Continuing on here, new business site plan number five, that is postponed to March 21st, 2019 meeting. Other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda.
There is none.
Okay, we have none in there, so we don't need to review that. Other business, case number two, nomination of planning board officers for 2019 calendar year, so.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, we have a couple people in the audience, is somebody, what's up there, gonna do something else?
Um, maybe not, they might just be looking at, have you talked to the folks in the audience, is there anything?
Do you hear from the case, or they're just observing?
Be observing.
Okay.
So, in the past, the nominations, we've, we've put them out there, we've had someone in charge of, you know, emailing around, receiving the nominations, and putting them out. That would be at like the first meeting in January, and then we'd vote on it. We can continue to do it that way, or we can put them out on the floor right now and vote on them, it's totally up to us, so. Does anybody have any thoughts, or?
For our, our offices?
Yes, this is for us, yeah, so.
My thoughts are, things go fine like they are, and there's any reason to change them.
Yeah, I'm fine with the, I don't know if Adam's fine with the way he's running.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine.
I'm fine, yeah, we're staying as chair.
I'm healthy.
Ed's healthy, so, so yeah, I mean, we can get this done, if someone wants to make a motion, we can, we can go right at it.
I'll make a motion, that for the upcoming year, we, we keep our offices the same, the same.
Should we just make a statement affirmatively so?
So Scott will be our chair, Adam will be our vice chair, and Ed would be our clerk.
Secretary.
Secretary.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Rapucci.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I think your bylaws say you have, you do it, your, your first meeting of the year, you actually vote?
Oh, okay.
Okay, this is just to get a nomination committee to get candidates, so you can vote on at the first of the year.
So we don't need a nomination committee, because this is what we're gonna do, we're just waiting till.
Well, you could just nominate.
Yeah, you can make a motion, those are the nominations for consideration.
There you go.
Okay.
That's what my motion is, thank you.
For consideration, okay, so we have that mo, that motion for considerations, do you have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robbins. Any other further discussion? So the intent would be to consider those, and then we'll bring it up for an actual vote, a motion for a vote at the first meeting in January, so, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion for those considerations passes. And I think that's all we have, unless anybody else has any further business or discussion points.
We're not gonna talk about this, are we?
Uh, I did talk about that at the beginning, so that's language that I put together with regard to a potential kind of standards stipulation language, if we want to address engineering review of site engineering systems, you know. I'd ask that you just review that, consider it, do your own research on it, the planning staff is doing that, or is intending to do that, correct?
Correct.
And then I would, we'd like to get some feedback from the staff as well to add to it before we go too much further, so, Ed?
I'd like to ask that the staff send out some feelers with this language to our prominent engineers that come before us, and have their input on how they feel it would affect their applicants, and any changes that they'd like to be made, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, you know, generally speaking, what the cost may be to their applicants, obviously engineers may like it.
Well, I would like to get them to how they feel the cost, that part of it, and also what they feel about it, how the cost would impact, how they'd like to see it addressed, so that we can get some real feedback from engineering and engineers, and how they, how they feel, the civil engineers or the engineering, what would affect, how they would send that, who would be testing it, going in and looking at it, that cost impact, so we can get some real numbers, and so that, you know, how they would like it to be run, doesn't mean that we have to do it that way, but we can now have some professional input into this.
Yeah. That's fine, I remind you that I do this every day too, so.
Exactly, and that's, that's great, that's.
For me, the real question is, does it satisfy you and Steve, because you guys were the guys who thought this was a good idea, so.
We'll get some feedback from planning too, and, but I think, Roger, you wanna talk to Leo and others about?
Exactly, that's what I was gonna say, legal, have legal input on it.
Exactly.
And maybe have our two aldermen, automatic people, that they could take a look at it, so that if it be, ever became an ordinance, that they could look at it and see how it would, may affect an ordinance at some point in time.
We, we may need to look at it to see if we need to introduce it as an ordinance, if it's going to be a requirement.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Fully noted. Any other discussion points? Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Any motion by Mr. Rapucci to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
But adjourned too.